The gang's all here. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by the whole Get Oiling team. We've got Greg, Amanda, Kim, Jess, and Colin. Say hi, guys.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning, everybody. We're so excited, so excited, sorry. I'm so excited, too. We're so excited to chat with you guys, to see where you're coming from today. You are probably very excited to be here because we were talking about something that everybody wants to know these days. This may apply to you if you are someone who's looking to take your member education off of Facebook. Maybe just a quick show of hands, because I know this is a lot of you, because I know a lot of you guys. But maybe just a quick show of hands, like, how many of you have ever been shut down on Facebook to where you can't comment in your groups? Like, where you can't actually do things in your own Facebook groups? I am seeing this all the time lately, you guys, and a very good friend of ours here at Get Oiling, with a couple of enormous groups, is dealing with this right now. So, guys, it's really frustrating. And unfortunately, this is just kind of a side effect of working on a platform that isn't really made for what we do. And so that's a big part of why we have created this capability with Get Oiling, for you to take your member education onto your own site. So nobody's policing what you say. And you can say what you want to, when you want to, how you need to, in whatever leverage format you choose. So today, we're going to talk about how you can get that going. So maybe you guys come over here and get in the chat. We're excited to see you. Who is excited to learn about how to build a member group today? So I do have a download for you guys. You've probably seen it already in your email. If you're watching this as a recording in the future, look in the description box on YouTube, and you'll be able to see that as well. This is really about planning. And I'll get into why that's so important and such a critical distinction. And for you Reds, I promise you, it's worth it. Just watch, okay? Go ahead and share my screen team if we could turn off our videos to make for better presentation quality. We'll get on with the show here. And just so you know, you guys, we do have a couple of live website reviews today. Really excited to do those as well. We'll get to those at the end of the call, as well as some Q and A. So today, we're going to talk about how to plan and then go create your member education group on your own website with Get Oiling. Now, if you came here needing help today, if you've got questions, go ahead and add those to the Q and A box right now. We can help you. Our team is here to answer questions live here during the call. And where we've got time and space, we can absolutely work with you on more complicated issues after we go through the training here. So on today's training, we're going to talk about how to plan, then build that member education vault with Get Oiling. Then we're going to get into those live Q and As and site reviews after this quick training. So make sure that you check your email if you're here live for the download. I created a planning document for you. And then, of course, you could check the description box as well if you're watching this later on YouTube. So pro tip for this, guys, this is true about anything you do on our platform, period, end of story. Plan first. Why? Because learning new technology without a clear plan on how you'll use it is a guaranteed recipe for frustration. How many of you guys know this is true? Maybe a quick show of hands. How many of you have come in, maybe not really sure exactly what you're going to do? And then you tried to learn how to use something on our platform? And you're like, oh, my God, let me run to the help inbox right now. So this will alleviate that for you. If you've got a plan and you're clear on what you want, then everything else works fine. Our system works for you the way you want it to. So if you come in knowing what you want, then you can get what you want, right? So don't even bother logging into the platform until you're clear on the plan. And that's what we're going to get clear on right now. So let's get that going. So these are our steps for planning your member education vault on your Get Oiling website. First, determine the function of the vault, literally. What will this vault do for you and for your members? What will it do? Then determine the resources. What will you use? What content will you use to do the things that you want this vault to do? And then determine the format. What will you do? How will you deliver this experience to your member? All right, and don't worry, I'm going to break these down piece by piece with real-life examples that are going to make good sense to you. Okay, so first, education, right? Every member area that we create, whether that be on Facebook or on our own website, the primary central function of that is member education, right? This is education on Young Living, on Young Living products, on safe use, on recipes, and all that kind of good stuff, right? Second, announcements, right? Getting the news out. What are the PV promos? What's in and out of stock? What's coming back in stock that we should all be excited about? Announcements are a critical function of any member resource. And discussion. This is for engagement, for support, for camaraderie, right? For culture, for stickiness, right? So for creating the actual environment that people want to engage in. So those are the three primary functions of any member resource area, whether that be on Facebook, or in this case, in the Get Oiling Vault, is going to have these things. Okay, so let's talk about what we'll use to fill those functions. First, for education, the resources that you'll use now, and these are suggestions, okay? And these are suggestions that I am making based on vaults that I consult and build on for our one-on-one clients who are leaders in this company, okay? So I'm making suggestions based on what we're doing here. Sways are a great thing to use for education. Many of you probably use them already. But you probably go and try to dig through your Grow Workspace library, or your Microsoft account, or somewhere, somewhere, there is a link to a sway that you wish you knew you could get right now to share with someone, to educate them on something. Like, does that sound familiar? Anybody, quick show of hands. How many of you have known, like, oh, my gosh, did somebody made a thing that would be so great to explain this right now? And then you spend like 20 minutes trying to find it. Then you get distracted, and it's like two hours later, and where did the day go? Right? I see your hands. So what you want to be able to do is take those things that you probably already have in high volume and put them into one place. Or you can simply say, go check out this class inside of your member area, and you're going to find the information that you're looking for. No more digging for links, okay? So you're going to determine the resources you're going to use. Sways are fantastic for this. You can actually embed them onto lesson pages and Get Oiling online classes. Also video. A lot of you guys make video, or your teams make video, your upline makes videos, or you have videos that you love that teach maybe the unboxing of kits and things like that. This is a great place to put it. Again, putting it in a referenceable spot that people can go back to and reference, right? In an organized fashion. And this is kind of where Facebook falls short, right? How many times have you gone into a Facebook group hoping to find an answer to something? And you wind up being the 58 millionth person who has posted that same question? Because it's just hard to find stuff that's shared in Facebook groups, right? I could rant on and on about this. So you're going to put video in your education as well. Classes go in here, too. And when I say classes, think about your social media classes. So if you've ever done a Facebook class, the same images and text that you would use, you can use inside of a Get Oiling vault. Is it going to work the exact same way? No, but is it going to save you infinitely more time and thus help you save time and help more people in the future? Yes, promise it's more effective. And so for your classes, these can be video classes. They can be your text campaigns that you import from our content providers that teach and engage on specific themes or specific products. And then, of course, for education, you can use Zoom. Now, announcements. Remember, we said education, announcements, and discussion. These are the primary functions, right? So we've just talked about the resources we'll use for our education function. For our announcements function of our group, we're going to, again, use sways. Some of you guys use sways for monthly newsletter-type content, right? You either get that from someone else, or you make it yourself. PDFs, so this would be a monthly newsletter in a downloadable format. This could also be announcements. Again, these are things that you can get from a content provider. Please do that, right? Or if you really just love making this stuff yourself, or you're a graphic designer, photographer, and so on, then by all means, DIY this. Newsletters, again, they're beautiful ones that are made and sold by many content providers in our space. This is where you would put this as well. Those PV promos, beautiful pictures for that. You can plug that into your announcements area of your Get Oiling vault. And then, of course, you can do live announcements on Zoom. And if you didn't know, and you're brand new, welcome. We have Zoom included with your Get Oiling account. All right, now finally, for discussion, right? Education, announcements, discussion, our final function of our group. We've got online chat rooms. This is a feature of our vaults. We cover all of the things that you can do inside of a Facebook group, except we make it yours, and it's better organized. So you can actually have a chat feature. People can tag each other. You can share images. You can schedule posts and so on. So you have your discussion with the online chat rooms. And then, of course, you can do live calls with Zoom. All right, so now that we have determined the function and the resources, now we're going to determine the format, okay? The format for our resources, meaning literally, what are we going to go build on the Get Oiling platform with those resources that we have just laid out? All right, so on the education front, you're going to create an online class inside of your Get Oiling vault. And don't worry, I have a resource for you that's going to show you exactly what that means and exactly how to do it. But what you're going to do for your educational resources is you're going to plug them into an online class. This provides an organized structure through which you can point and reference people back to it. So if somebody wants to learn more about oils that they can use for the puppy that they just brought home, that they just adopted, then you can say, hey, go over to the class in this member area and look for the lesson entitled such-and-such, right? You tell them to go there instead of you going and digging for that resource, right? So you're going to create an online class in your vault for this purpose. You can import a sway from Grow Workspace, for instance, or if you have others, you make your own. They can look through a sway with this information that you put in that class. There could be video in that class, again, from you, someone on your team, someone else on Team YL. And then, how many of you guys here today use text marketing for Get Oiling? Maybe you use different content providers to send out text classes on a monthly basis? A lot of you guys are doing this. So the thing is, when you send out, like, so let's just say your text provider created something new this month, and you're really excited to share it. Well, that's not going to be immediately relevant to every single person in your organization right now, right? Like, so let's say your text provider comes up with something that's for pets, and you just send it out to everyone. And maybe not everyone has a pet. Or maybe someone needs to know about this in three weeks when you have forgotten where the link is to that resource or how to send them that text campaign, right? This solves that problem. So what you can do is actually put your text campaign. So text this code to my Get Oiling number, and then they can opt themselves in for whatever class they want at any point in time. And you can set it and forget it, all right? Another format for our resources for announcements would be a Get Oiling page. So a page inside of a Get Oiling vault. So an online class is actually something that people can literally plus press play and click through, read through, watch through, comment through, and everything, just like any other online class format that you would see elsewhere on the internet. This would simply be a webpage that would only live inside of your Get Oiling vault. And this would solely be for the purpose of announcements for this month, right? So this is where you could upload that PDF newsletter that we talked about when we outlined our resources. You could also add images for PV promos and other types of monthly promotions and news. You can also just include monthly news and updates about you, about your team, or provide a place for your teammates to provide similar information. And then you could have a link there to your monthly Zoom call. Another format is a discussion room, all right? So this is where your actual, the discussion function of your vault will take place. So inside that discussion room, you could use some of those promo images, just like you would to a sort of a feed inside of a Facebook group, right? You can add those there. You can also use class images. If you guys have done Facebook or Instagram classes before, you can post those inside of your discussion room in your Get Oiling vault as well. You could also put engagement posts in here. I highly recommend that you do that, to really start creating a social environment and community for your people to engage in, in particular, if you are working to move folks off of Facebook. And then, of course, support threads, providing a place where people can talk about specific issues or, you know, specific guidance and questions. And you could pin those, or you can, you could even create multiple discussion rooms if you wanted to for specific purposes, all right? So that's really it, right? You've got a planner, and then once you've got those things planned out, you can go over and set them up inside of your Get Oiling account. Now, here are some tips for you. Okay, first, mindset, really super, super important, guys. This is not Facebook. This is not going to behave just like a Facebook group. This is better than Facebook because it is yours. So if we go into this expecting that we are going to create something that fulfills the function, serves the resources, and the format that we've planned, we're creating something that is ours, that we have made for our team, that helps us to be able to manage ourselves and our business more effectively and to serve our people more appropriately and more effectively in the long term, right? If you go in expecting this to be something that's not designed to be, you will be frustrated, right? So make sure that you're going into this with an open mind and that you're going in with the clear head of knowing that I have a specific function, set of functions that I want this to fill. I have a means by which I want to deliver this. And ideally, you're using our content providers for that. And then I'm going to build the format by which they receive those things, okay? Use our content providers, you guys, to populate your online classes and lessons, to link to your texting classes and more. Do not try to do all of this stuff yourself. There are so many beautifully made, well-written, expert-crafted, Young Living-centric, educational and engagement resources that are out there. If you go to our website and you scroll down to our partner section, and you can find a growing number of those folks who are creating those things just for you. They plug right into your Get Oiling account, and there are simple and easy ways to use what they've already done to support your members. You don't have to be the end-all, be-all for your people, all right? Now, finally, and this is super, super important, understand that this is not going to be an overnight transition in terms of moving people over if you are in the process of shifting. Be consistent and cross-promote to those Facebook groups. Some people will say, well, I don't want to go log in in another place. Those are probably also people who will just throw up their hands and walk away if they can't successfully log into the VO. And can we really do anything about them, really? You know? What you can do is be consistent, be loving, be consistent, show up, and move the value over to this new place intentionally. Some people won't do anything, no matter what you do for them, and we know that's the case. So don't get too hung up on the resistance that you get for how you run your business. You just do what's right and serve in the best way that you know is possible. So make sure that you consider also putting a link to this member group that you create and the resources that are in it. Make a commitment, of course, to continually add more to it. But then post in your Facebook groups about it and say, hey, I put a new thing over here in this vault. Here's how you go check it out. Put it into the unit section and talk about it regularly so people start getting used to going over and logging into your member area so that you can start making this the main thing. It's not going to be an overnight deal. People are naturally resistant to change. We want the thing that feels the easiest, right? It will become easy the more familiar it becomes, all right? So now, when you're ready to start, right? When you're ready to actually get this thing made, get it built, you go over to GetOiling.com/membertraining. Don't do this until you've done the planning step that we've just gone through today, okay? Be clear on what you're going to use, what it's going to do, the format. And by format, I mean, is this an online class in the vault? Is this a page in the vault? Is this a discussion room in the vault? Because those are the things, that's the content you can put into the vault, okay? Have that figured out before you go over here and then follow the steps, because this will teach you. GetOiling.com/membertraining, totally free. This is an extensive guide on exactly how to set up your member area the way you want to with all of the options included, okay? Now, you will see, and let me pop over to, if I still have it open. I'll go full screen with this. This is what you'll see below this recording on YouTube and what you will have received in your email, hopefully, by this point, if you are here. Actually, let me get a new share here, because I know you guys don't see that. Here we go. All right, so can you see this? Can you see the?
Yeah, I see like a document, like a word processing document.
Yes, thank you. All right, yeah, so this is, you've got a PDF of this. This shows you everything, right? So step one, determine the function of your vault. These are the main functions. Step two, what are the resources that you'll use? Do you have sways, right? Are you using Grow Workspace? Are you using other content providers? What are you going to put into your eventual format here? Okay, so this is what you'll use to plan out. What is the educational resources I'm going to use? What are the announcement resources I'm going to use? And then, what do I plan to do for discussion? And then you decide how you want it set up, and then you go over and you set it up. And on the second page of this document, I've actually provided you with a work order. So what steps do I actually follow in what order? So when you go over to GetOiling.com/membertraining, this is the order you're going to follow. You're going to create your vault. You're going to create the class for your member education vault. And then you're going to add that to your vault. You'll add a discussion room. You'll add a recurring Zoom meeting. You'll create an announcements page. And then you'll have that all set up to go. And all of the other details, including how you add people to it and things like that, are going to be right here at GetOiling.com/membertraining. Now, I'm going to go right back over here real quick to our slides and show you guys just a couple of other things really quick. By the way, if you're not already on our list, GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession is how you can join these live calls. We're going to get into Q and A and site reviews right now. We've got two folks who signed up for reviews that we'll be getting to in here in just a second. Though we did have a member area-related question that came up that I wanted to go ahead and address here, because I think this is pertinent to what we're talking about right now. So we had a question come in. How can we make vaults visible but only allow certain people into certain vaults? So the quick answer is, if the vault is free, meaning you don't, like, people don't have to pay to get into a vault, but you want to gate access to the vault, meaning only certain people should be able to access it, leave this box here that says let others in the member area see and join this vault, leave it unchecked. That means that this vault won't be visible in your member area unless someone has been granted access, okay? If you want only certain people in your vaults, then they should not be visible to your member area at large. Now, there is one other option that I could mention here. If you have something that you're offering that is of a specific monetary value to prospects that maybe you're giving away to some people or something like that, it could be a paid vault, and you've got a way to bypass the payment when you add people manually. But the short answer is, if you want only certain people in your vault, like your member area, right? You only want your members in your member resource vault, right? Then you simply don't make it visible to other people in the vault. Only people who have permission, i.e. people who are in your downline, would get access. So nobody else needs to see it, okay? Now, if you use a landing page, which is a popular way, especially if you have a larger team, to try to get people to get onto or get into your member vault on their own, right? Without you having to do it manually. So if you set up a landing page to enter a vault, then technically, anyone could get in by registering. This assumes that people might be sharing the link inappropriately. You can get notifications anytime someone enters a vault, and you can go and verify that that is a person that's in your downline pretty simply, if that's what you want to do. If you think that that lack of integrity is something that is going to impact you in your team, and you think that that's a phenomenon that you're dealing with, then don't use the landing page. You can simply add people either one at a time or in bulk to your member area so that they get access, okay? So if you're concerned about the wrong people getting the link to the landing page, either you or a teammate or someone who you've hired can manually take those VO contacts at one at a time or many at a time and apply those, add them to your vault so that you always know that the right people have access. So this would happen when you're on your contact management page and you select the appropriate contacts. You're going to hit the actions button, go to add campaign, follow-up plan, vault, or tags, and then select the vault that you want to add them to and apply it, and now they have access, right? And now all they would have to do is just log into your member area. All right, now, we're going to get into site reviews here. So if you want to have your site reviewed on a future weekly work session, head over to GetOiling.com/websitereview, and we will review your site.
Hey, do you have time for one quick question that came in on the chat about classes? I know, like, our content providers have what they call a class, and then we have what we call classes. And I think that's, you know, there's a difference in terminology there that could be useful to clarify. Like, what would be, what's a good time to use a Get Oiling class? It's not always when, you know, it doesn't always correspond one-to-one to a content provider class. What's your take on that?
Right, yeah, so a Get Oiling class is a little bit more similar to, if you had it, like, it's an online course. It is structurally set up like an online course. So it's not something, let's just say, for instance, that you have a class on Ningxia Red, right? This is sort of a bite-sized class, right? This is something that you would use for text. You could use this in a sway file. You could use this in a social class, series of photos, what have you. A Get Oiling class is a bigger, more comprehensive thing. Let me actually show you what I'm talking about here. This would be a fine time to maybe show Jane's account and let you guys see. Let me make sure I'm logged in here before I go and show. But yeah, it's, classes from our content providers are actually marketing campaigns more often than not for you. That's kind of the short answer. All right, now I can share my screen and show you guys this.
Sometimes they're like product resources to, you know, like, here's all about a specific product or product line.
Yes, exactly. All right, so let me show you. This is an example of a fully-built member area inside of a Get Oiling website. This is for Jane. And then Abundant Wellness is the name of her member education group, okay? So inside of Jane's member education group, she has a page, like a guide, a start here page. She has a couple of classes. One of them is how to get started with Young Living. The other is Oily Education, and this is what I'm talking about here today. She's got a page here that has monthly news and promos. There's a discussion room as well, and then they've got a meet-the-team page, too. So this is a fully-built, just, you know, you don't have to do all of these things. Just the stuff that we've covered today should be sufficient for anyone getting started. So the class, to answer that question, when I go to Oily Education here, we have utilized Grow Workspace for this. So when, and if you have Grow Workspace, then you're going to recognize that these are all bundle names that Grow Workspace has. And we've categorized them into categories and made them into classes. So sort of the class category, or the lesson category, rather, sorry. The lesson categories are these here in the gray, and the individual lessons are these guys here. So if I just hit start class, and the first one is, I have my kit, now what? Because that makes sense as a first, you know, first thing for someone who's just getting started to engage with. So if I hit that, I'm going to go there. And what you'll see is that I have the Grow Workspace sway of the same name embedded right here. So this, you might call this a class, right? So this is what content providers call classes. Another thing that you could see as a class would be a text class. So if I go to, I'm pretty sure CBD has this, yes. Okay, so this, again, CBD class in sway format, right? But we have this as a lesson inside of a Get Oiling class. And bonus, text CBD to this number, and then they can get the text class, which is a text campaign for this, right? This is what I'm talking about here. And we've also, because Grow Workspace has like tons of beautiful printable stuff, too. That's right here, right here in the download section, pretty cool, right? So everything is there. So a class looks like this and actually has a lot more going on than just a class that you get from a content provider, just a class that you would teach this month, or just a 101 class or something like that. It's actually a lot more comprehensive. And if you're using it in the way that we're showing here, this becomes a course, really, or a curriculum that is ever-expanding, because our content providers are always making more new, great stuff that you can add to this. And it's something that they can go back and reference, right? It's not just that thing that you sent last March that you wish you knew how to send them again right now, real quick. You can just tell them to go find the thing in this class inside of this vault, right? That's kind of the key difference. So you can say, hey, so if you go over to the Oily Education class inside of our member area and look for hormones for her, you can learn all about the stuff that I use. And so they go here, they click this, they read the sway. Maybe they share, maybe people are sharing their product testimonials for the products that are listed in here. And then, oh, my gosh, she can even get this, this cool trifold that's in here that they made. So that's, that's really kind of the difference in what this looks like once it's done. Pretty cool, right? All right, I want to welcome out first Nikki Franklin. Are you here? If you could raise your hand, there you are. How are you? Come out and chat with us, please.
My hair, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi. How's it going?
Good, good, good. All right, so I'm going to show your website here. Oh, this is really cute. Hang on, you guys can't see it yet. All right, so tell me a little bit about what you are, you know, kind of wanting to get feedback on today.
I just kind of want overall feedback on stuff. I want to know, just make sure that stuff jumps out correctly and kind of like from like a consumer perspective that everything, you know, is... a consumer perspective that everything, you know, is attention grabbing, that needs to be attention grabbing, you know?
Yeah, yeah. First off, beautiful job branding with the colors. This is really, really gorgeous. So what what I would say is is to consider the philosophy of the newspaper and have above the fold, something that grabs them immediately so that they know this is someone who I need to hear from, need to hear more from, and that has something to offer me right now. So the way that I would recommend that you do this is maybe even on this image here where you say you're beautiful, you're wise, you're worthy. I help women like you, you describe them, get this result. Here's my guide, right? Have have a lead magnet, have a lead getting thing and a message that compels them to get it right when they land on the page above the fold, right? People, the the above the fold sort of mindset about copywriting goes back to the early days of newspaper sales, which is quite old. People will buy a paper based on what they see when the paper is folded, laying flat on the on the ground, on the table, on the stack, whatever. The top page, the front part of your website is no different. People will get distracted and run off our our attention spans are even smaller now, exponentially smaller now than they were then. So you want people to really just kind of get here and be like, okay, what's in it for me? Because that's exactly what's going through their mind unless they already know you. And if they already know you, then of course they're going to keep reading. But we want to build so that people who don't know you can be your leads and that they don't have to really go through a whole lot of of thinking because apparently that's that's hard. You know, for for the average person on the internet that's distracted by 10 million things. So, so yeah, do you have, I think I noticed you've got some some guides down here. Ooh. All right, so what would you say your favorite? I don't know, sort of your favorite lead magnet? Or if you have, you know, just a way that you know that you can help your perfect person really quickly to get a result? What would that look like for you? Is it one of these or do you think it might be something different?
I'm going to be making a new one that would be that way because I've learned more of what my bat signal is and how to help my person better. So I haven't created that yet.
Okay.
But it will be something based on finding your your purpose and mindset training and stuff.
Excellent. Okay. So and that kind of that fits in with this right here. This your beautiful, wise and worthy. So what I would say is to just have something like pop this up, maybe you could have this part. I like this here. It does. It does take up a little bit more sort of visual space than say like this menu does, which is fine. But I would maybe take this and put it a little further down or make it smaller or something like that and just pop up at the very top, just you, so and so, call them out, say something about them. I help something like you, someone like you, get this result, click here to get it. And then you just have, you know, just have a little small section beneath that, the with the button and some copy and then connect that to the pop up on your page. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent. Is there anything else you want me to take a look at?
My blog.
Okay.
And my favorite things, I just want to make sure it all flows.
Okay. I love that you're using your own custom cover for your YouTube videos and that you're YouTube being excellent. This is really good.
Trying to keep it based off of my branding, so.
No, it's great. You're you're repeating the same colors, which is really important. That's good. Okay. I like this.
I added that because I was trying to see if somebody would save it on Pinterest if it would show that picture. It does not.
Got you. I am not entirely clear on how to do that. Greg, if you want to chime in. I'm not sure how to do that.
Sorry, what was the question? I was looking at chat.
So I added this picture on to my blog because when I saved it to Pinterest, like, you know, seeing how that worked and everything, it saves my actual logo. It doesn't save a picture. So I thought maybe I just need a picture in there, but when I added a picture, it still didn't do it. It just shows my logo.
Hmm, okay.
Is that like a metadata thing?
It might be. Yeah, that'd be something we could probably look into if you email us. I mean, because there's like a Facebook sharing debugger tool that you can use to like tell Facebook to go visit your website again if you've made changes. Because what what Facebook does that like copy or essentially makes like a mini copy of your website, you know, like the photo and the sharing text and all that. And once it's done that, it doesn't like go visit your site again for some arbitrary period of time. So there's a tool that can let you tell Facebook that it's been updated that might be necessary here. Because the blog post, the way that work with sharing is it uses whatever your featured image is and then shares that out, you know, on Facebook. So the blog post featured image becomes your featured image that shows up when you share the Facebook, the post on Facebook. And then I think the, you know, the headline becomes the headline and I don't know if it uses the byline or if it grabs something else, a different part of your site. But it might be something we could look into a little bit further through email if that'd be helpful.
Awesome. So one thing that I would say on your blog posts is down here is where you're actually creating sort of a transition into a call to action. You know, by the way, I created an entire course for young entrepreneurs to be able to get your mindset right. I would first, I would switch this over from a scripted font because it is a little bit harder to read. It takes a little bit more mental investment to read and you really do want to err on the side of of making things stupid simple so that people will easily engage with them. You want to make it just lower all the barriers as much as possible. So I would switch it over to a more straightforward font. Even this one is fine that you're using up here. And then I would make this bolder or bigger or something like where this very clearly is to draw the eye down. So a bold font and maybe just slightly larger would would give them basically the the call because when they're scrolling, they're screening through and what a lot of people do when they get to a blog like this, maybe they'll watch the video because they just want to see something. And then they go and they're like, okay, that's a lot. Do I want to read it? When you do have a longer passage, it can help to maybe break something like this, make it bold, make it big and then get back into the text. You've probably seen that on a blog or an article before where you'll see sort of breaks in the blocks of text where there will be like a bolded statement or something like that. That kind of encourages the eye down the page and that'll help people continue to engage with it. But then importantly, you know, what you want this blog to do for you is to is to actually get people to convert, get this free training, get, you know, become your lead, right? So just make sure that you are providing them that opportunity subconsciously for their eye to be drawn down and attracted to this, you know, bold block of text. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. And then your favorite things.
So it's not completely finished, just so you know. Like the kitchen and tech, you can't click on those yet because I haven't linked them.
Okay, this is really cute. I like that. So are these are these affiliate guides?
Yes.
Excellent. Ooh, look at you. Okay, click on the book, picture title or title name. Great. I love it. What I would recommend, and this is what I do when I make pages like this, is to is to maybe just add a little blurb, like what what do you love about it? Because, you know, these are, okay, so these are books that changed your life, but how? Because you're basically, again, thinking about lowering the bar of expectation and activity. Because again, most people would prefer to just blindly like scroll through Facebook at like baby and cat videos. Really like that's, that's the, that's the feedback, the positive feedback pattern that most of us are stuck on. And so you you want to provide as much contextual relevance as possible, even when it feels like you're being too obvious, you're probably not. So books that changed your life, just make a little blurb, like here's how this changed my life. Because that might actually cause them to go, oh, wow, you know, I thought I knew what this thing was about, or I thought I heard somebody talk about that before, but that makes perfect sense. I think I want to go read that. So I would just add just a little bit in, you know, what do you think about it? Like, what did it do for you? Like, what was a key takeaway or something like that would be good.
And do that under the actual like books. So like I had Dr. Joe Dispenza, so just like under that section of him, this is what his books did for me. Okay.
Yep, yep, yeah, definitely. And actually, the way that I've done this in the past is to, let's see, I'm trying to think, because this is a good oiling custom page, you know, where we have the image on the left and the text on the right. Right? I would put the image, of course, on the left and then on the right, I'd have the title of it, the name of the author, and then just a tiny bit of, you know, like a couple of bullets, you know, of my take, you know, it'll say like, you know, Ashley's take on this or something like that. Or, you know, here's why I love this. Because again, like, you know, we can say, okay, these are the things that I love and they're great, but really great affiliate guides will actually, they'll read a little bit more, you know, like a kind of like a blog post almost, you know, where people can kind of continue to get insight into you, what you have to say, what you have to offer in this context, you know? So what did the, you know, I read this book and it totally changed my thinking about X, right? Or I thought that I had this figured out, but then I read this book or this book helped me to do this. Like that's, it's just, it's just a good thing to have as a recommendation. It also takes you out of the, hey, I'm an affiliate and I and I get money when I offer this into, hey, this could actually be really helpful for you because this was really helpful for me in this way.
Cool.
Yeah. And then similarly, when we do, oh, I like this, the DIY spray bottles. Yeah, so you can just just make recommendations, how I use this, right? That kind of thing. And you don't have to go too crazy with it. I mean, it's perfectly fine and acceptable like as it is right now. It's just, you know, a way to optimize moving into the future.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, of course. These are great. And let's see if we go back to. Got an about page. Great job on this. This is such a good picture of you and it's nice and big. All right. This is good. This is so, so good. I would keep, keep this font down here. This is a really, it's a nice, bold, easy to read font here.
Okay.
Great job. Oof, great job. Any other questions? I'm so proud of you.
No, I just, yeah, I just, I threw this together so quick and I was like, okay, like, now is it actually like drawing people in? And that was like my biggest question. So I'm so.
Yeah, well, so your it's your, your content is going to draw people in, but what they're seeing on that page, it's what's going to make them stay. So really, really good job. Hey, a quick, a quick show of hands. How many of you guys, she said she just threw that together? How many guys are really impressed at what she just threw together? Yeah, look, look at all those hands, just.
I don't know, where do you see that at?
Oh, I think that might be a panelist thing if I think you're, you may not be able to see it, but it's a lot. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Really, really nice.
Thank you.
All right. Who else is here today? Kristy. All right, I'm going to lower hands real quick. Kristy, can you raise your hand, please, so I can find you? If you are here, Kristy Gafari. Let's see, Kristy, I think that's it. Are you here? If not, we're going to go ahead and head over into Q and A. Takes me forever just to throw together a picture, let alone a whole page. Nice job. Yeah, it was really, really nice job. All right, so Kristy, if you are here and we're missing you, definitely shoot us a message, but we will go ahead and just head into Q and A until we hear back from you. All right, so Tammy asks, what is the difference between a blog, a guide, an ebook, a PDF, et cetera? So we actually just showed you a blog post that was, that was on the website we were just reviewing, right? So where you saw that she had, where Nikki had a video and then, you know, we were going through all of the text and then she had a call to action there at the end, that is a blog post. A blog post is an article, a short article that you write on your good oiling site that eventually if you are using keywords that people are looking for, they can come and find you. They can, let's just say you write how to, you know, how to wash clothes naturally or you know, how to wash clothes without harsh chemicals or something like that. And you write a blog post and you talk about, you know, the oils you use on your dryer balls and, you know, what your favorite detergent is or whatever. And so that's where people go and they find you when they Google and that's where you go find the recipe or whatever. That's a blog. Okay, that's content. A guide can be a number of things, right? But typically in the context of what we talk about here is, what we're talking about here is is something that you're giving away. Like here is a guide to get a thing done. Now you can call a blog post a guide if you're showing someone how to achieve, you know, an outcome, right? But usually we're talking about something that is maybe in PDF format or in a webpage format. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it really just depends on the content. PDF is just a file format. Ebooks are delivered in a file format, so are recipes in a PDF format. If you have, let's just say for instance, if you have gone through Martha Krejci's Go for Gold, the course that we did with her, where we teach you how to create a funnel that, you know, that reaches and teaches your person and gets them excited to chat with you, we teach you how to make a guide on a get oiling custom page. If you go to get oiling dot com forward slash get leads, we have a full funnel training that shows you how to build a funnel and get oiling somewhat similarly, except I teach you how to make a PDF there. So that's something that somebody could actually download and print. So and then an ebook, just an ebooks, just like a really long PDF, basically. All right. Let's see, okay, so regarding recurring Zoom meeting, is that something that would play on a regular schedule automatically or would that be a live Zoom meeting that could be scheduled later? So when we're talking about Zoom meetings that you put into your member area vault, what I recommend that you do is just create a recurring Zoom meeting in your good oiling account. And then you can actually just grab the link to that and put it there. And then when it's time for you to go live on that regular, for that regular meeting, you just go live from there inside of Zoom on your get oiling. It's kind of limited in like what I can actually show and tell you right now, just because we're on Zoom for this call. But I guess if we were to, here, let me see if I go, if I share my screen real quick, I'll just show you where that is real quick. Okay, so right here under Zoom meetings in your good oiling. You can create a regular meeting, a recurring meeting here. So actually, here we go. So weekly roundup, this is a weekly recurring meeting. That is something that you can copy the link and then you go put that on to the resource page inside of your vault, for instance, or put that into a saved replies so that you can schedule it to go out at the certain date and time every week to remind people who would be attending, right? And then you, you know, you set your settings up in here and now you have a recurring meeting. Okay, so that's, that's what that looks like. And you can schedule that to be an ongoing thing for as long as you want. All right, Tricia says, this is so helpful, still working on the difference between member area and using the vault. Seems like you can do all of this in the member area as well. Guys, if you feel confused at all about the distinctions between member area and vault, imagine that you're walking into, let's, you open a door and you walk into like a waiting room, right? A doctor's office. And then maybe there's like four different doors that you could go into. You're only allowed to maybe go into one or two and or maybe you can only access the one. There's nothing in the waiting room. Maybe you sit down, but there's like nothing to do. There's no content, there's no anything. You have to go into a vault, you have to go into a room to actually get what you came for. So when people enter a member area, they may have some general information on the wall. But then if you have access to a vault, that's going to show up, right? Or if you could have access by maybe paying for a vault, that's going to show up there as well. So people could purchase access to a vault from in the member area or they could simply get access. So for like your members, for instance, they can get access to something that they have been given permission to access. All right, Mary says, are you able to show us examples of vaults you like? All right. Mary says, are you able to show us examples of vaults you like? I don't know. I think this was from a little bit ago. So I did actually show an example of a member education vault that I built myself. I do happen to like it a lot. It is something we use as a template for our clients. So I hope that that one was helpful for you and, uh, and it's definitely one that can save you a ton of time. All right. Krista asks, when you create an online course, do we use Vimeo to create the videos and then add them to Get Oil Link? Can we just use our computer with Vimeo to create those videos? Yes. When you create an online course or you're creating, um, if you're creating content that is intended for, um, specific use, that's not lead generating content. So lead generating content is for YouTube, right? That's where you can be found. Um, that's where maybe you post a recipe and a call to action to come join your group or something like that. That's for YouTube. If you're actually doing something, uh, you're showing something, sharing something, saying something that is intended for an exclusive group, that's something you're going to want to use Vimeo for because it allows you to actually gate access and control the security functions and features. If you put something valuable on YouTube, anybody could get it. Why would they give you money or their information to be able to access it? So definitely use Vimeo and then, uh, take the Vimeo, um, uh, address, the URL for the video. And then you just plug that into the video field in the lessons. There's actually again, getoil.com forward slash member training shows you how to do that. All right. Mary says, just to make sure I understand, uh, the Jane Jones holistic hideaway is the vault. Yes. All right. Sorry. Holistic Hideaway is the member area. Abundant Wellness is the vault. Let me show you that one more time. If I could share my screen here. All right. So getting back over here to the member area. All right. So this is the member area. The holistic hideaway is Jane's member area. These are her vaults. Abundant Wellness, Holistic Abundance, Restore Vibrance, Holistic Hideaway. Okay. This is the member area. The vaults live inside it. The vaults have pages, online classes and discussion rooms. All right. Is it better to create classes as sways as opposed to the other class format where they go post to post? Sarah, this is going to depend really on what it is that you're teaching. Um, Get Oil Link online classes. Do, um, your plan does have a certain number attached to them. They're really intended to be built. As, you know, sort of master classes, not for like little classes. So when I say little classes, if this is something that somebody could go through in a few minutes or, you know, an hour or less, think like a 101 presentation, anything that typically goes into a sway, you know, stuff like that. That's something that you want to use alternate formats for, or put those formats like sways and videos into Get Oil Link classes. So using the format that I was just showing you, um, for your member training means that you can take high level concepts, put them into lessons in your online class and then populate those lessons with things like sways and images and text classes because it's a richer experience. Our member area platform with the online class feature is built in such a way that you can, of course, create a member area. Like I've shown you to educate your members, but you could also create a course that you sell for thousands of dollars, right? So it's really, it's built to be able to handle a really high value, uh, collection of content importantly. So if it's a, if it's a bite sized thing, if it's a small conceptual thing, use those different tools and plug those into the lessons for your members in the online class. So just have like one online class, it's oily education. If you wanted to add a different one that you use for duplication, like how to get started and log into your VO and stuff like that, you could do that too. Or you could put it all in one. It's up to you. All right. Heidi asks, is each one of the classes you showed an actual class that counts against the number we are allotted in our membership? So, uh, the class, and I'll show this one more time for you guys. Um, I can move this around. So the class is this, where you see this little hat, this little graduation cap, that's a class. Okay. That's what counts against the number that you have included with your account. And by the way, we do have the ability to add more. You can actually kind of à la carte add more if you want more. But strategically, if you want to use these in the best way possible, it's just say you're at basic, um, you just make an oily education one. And add all of the everything that you've got that's oily education because I know you have so much. And you put it all in one resource and this one thing will be the best thing that you ever used a function in Get Oil Link for, because it'll save you so much time. All right. So, uh, guys, do make sure if you have questions that you're coming over to the Q and A. So I don't miss you because I'm only looking at Q and A because we got a bunch of questions here. All right. Let's see. In the basic good oiling plan, is there a way to set a default font and font size for all blog posts? Greg, I'm not clear on that. Can you chime in?
Sure. I suppose I could start my video here too. So you don't have to look at a little drop. Hello. Setting a default font and a font size for blog posts. There is something under, uh, the my site. Let's see. It's my site. Settings, custom fonts. I could probably share out my screen here to show you that, uh, it's, it does affect pretty much the whole site. So it's not just the blog. Uh, if you're looking for just the blog, that would be a different. I mean, you could change the font size, like, you know, by using the editor, which here I'm just getting my window open here. So I can share this, uh, out and show you what I'm talking about here. One second here. Got a lot of stuff going on. Where's my zoom? Oh, can you make me a co-host too? Looks like.
Yep, sure can.
I have the magic zoom power to make this work. There we go. The magic is here. All right. So share the screen. And here. Awesome. Okay. So if you're on the basic, or so if you're on the premium plan, or if you're on the basic plan that has the, I guess, colors and fonts add-on, this will show up for you. So under my site settings here in the menu, there is a custom colors and fonts button here. And so what this will do, uh, it allows you to add some brand colors essentially. So you can choose colors. These actually show up when you're creating blog posts, um, or writing other content on your site. So you don't have to like always type in a little hex code or whatever. You can set some of these, some of these do affect site wide, like the link and the headline. Uh, I believe this top row does affect throughout the site. These other ones are more or less just kind of like extra colors that you can have in your palette. Uh, but down here are options for, uh, choosing the font. Now these definitely affect the blog. And there's some options here about, you know, changing it smaller or larger by default, you know, our headlines bold or they always up, uppercase, that sort of thing. And then choose which font that you want, uh, and it'll do that. And so that's how, you know, I think on, on Nikki's site, the font was different. The colors were different. I believe that's, uh, done through here. And then of course, when you're writing a blog post, uh, if I come over here, there are all the options available. Like if you, if you're, you know, if you're writing your post, you can change the font size on all of them if you want to. You can change the font family individually as well as the color. And you can see some of those brand colors show up here as well. You know, as, as it does under the background color section. So, um, yeah. Any questions? Let me know.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, now we have a question about themes for homepages where there was a section for products, a little graphic paw print flower, et cetera. Uh, and then another section with graphic and product, uh, was there a page format used to do that? So those are our built-in themes, uh, although we have had members who have sort of, you know, sort of copied those and, and sort of made their own. Um, that's certainly something that you could do, but that's not currently an editable theme. All right. Annie is saying, uh, looking for the best link to get my members into my member vault. So if you go to getoil.com/membertraining, we cover all of the different ways and considerations that you might need to make to get your people into your vault. Uh, you can use a landing page, which we do show. Uh, and then of course you have the way to add your people, like I showed a little while ago in the slides, if you wanted to do that manually. All right. How do we add sway links to the class in vaults? This is something that's covered in the member training as well. Getoil.com/membertraining. What you're basically doing is you're getting the sway embed code. So you would be clicking the sway, uh, on the sway on your browser, you would click share. And then it would either give you a link or you can get a code to embed. And so then you would embed that code, um, using the code viewer. And that's something that again, we show you how to do, uh, in the class there. It's fully like everything's there. Getoil.com/membertraining.
We also did a big sway training some time ago. I put the link to it in the chat. Um, if you're watching the replay, go to our YouTube channel and search for sway. It'll show up.
Yeah, we've, we've used sways for, you know, yeah, we've taught specifically that that is something that, yeah, it's actually on our, um, YouTube channel as well. We've done sway funnels, basically the same way that you would embed a sway, uh, in a custom page, which is something that we show you how to do. And, um, and the sway funnel training on, on Get Oilings YouTube channel is the same thing that you would do inside of a lesson. All right. Angie says, is there a good place to look to learn how to customize your page? I've just been using pre-made templates from Go For Gold, um, all over our YouTube channel. All over our YouTube channel. And then of course, if you're in Go For Gold, which you are, uh, there are lots and lots of pages that have been shared, shared there. There are also courses on how to customize your page. Uh, for those of you who just saw, uh, the page that we were sharing earlier, that was so, uh, so graciously shared for a review today, that was, uh, very clearly, uh, the product of, um, going through Ally Dean's custom homepage course, which is something you can find a link to on the homepage of our site as well.
And we do have our, sorry, we have our searchable help library as well. I put a link to that in the chat as well as in the Q and A. That kind of like guides you down that path. We've got some training videos in there as well. For those of you who don't like to watch the hour video, we have the condensed version in the help center.
Excellent. Yes. All right. Akusa says, um, how do I save my story to make an about me page? I want to take it off of my homepage. So I would just take the story that you have on your, uh, my story and about, uh, page on Get Oil Link. Copy that text and then create a new custom page, uh, that you can call about me. Have your image there. And that was, that was what we actually saw earlier, an example of that. Where she had her header set up and then she had an image of her in one column and then text on the other side. And so you can actually make that with a custom page with Get Oil Link. All right. Dee says, I'm taking videos and free printable embedding that into a blog. So I could send it to people who attend a class, but also to be able to put it behind a custom page with a lead capture for people to request. Is it a good method and format to use the blog post behind all that? No. So you're, you're going to want to, so blog, blog posts, unless you have made them password protected, blog posts are, uh, are going to be public. So if you want something, if you're going to create something that you expect people to exchange their contact information to be able to receive, you're going to want to put that onto a custom page or in a vault, one of those two things. That way it is actually something in terms of integrity, uh, that is only gated to the people who follow those steps. If it's on the blog, anybody could find it. And the, um, in terms of the principal, like that's something that you could link, you can upload and link, um, on a given page. So let's just say for instance, um, actually, if you go to getoil.com/ is it accelerator? Let me make sure that's correct because there's, there's actually an example of this. Yep. Yeah. So if you go to getoil.com/accelerator, this is a lead generation funnel we have been using for several years now. And, um, on the first page, there's a video and a button with a pop-up, but on the next page is a video. So after you give me your name and email, uh, you land on the next page, which has a video of me training on a download that you can click and get beneath the video. Um, so that's how I would recommend that you do that is actually have it on a custom page that is only accessible, um, after someone enters their name and information on a landing page or a landing page form. All right. Just Get Oil Link staff offer a service where they create a customized site along with the members ideas and desires. You bet. Reach out to us. Support at getoil.com. Got a great team. All right. Greg, I still have access for 10 days left, but not sure how to export the text classes onto some storage data in order to upload and to get oiling. So.
Okay. Uh, she was, I think in the previous questions was moving from another texting provider. It kind of depends to them, on them. I would reach out to them, see if there is some sort of export feature for, for campaigns. If not, which probably there isn't, um, it would be like a copy paste thing. Open up there's a one tab, open up Get Oil Link and the other tab and copy and paste a little bit of manual work. Hopefully you don't have like hundreds of campaigns. But, you know, that's how some people have moved them over in the past too.
Excellent. Okay. Judy, I'm confused how we send people to the member area. Is it on website or email invitation? So what you're really going to be doing, um, so you can technically have people enter your member area from your website if you wanted, um, where you could just say, you know, come check out all of these things in my member area. And that's provided that you're using your member area to offer a number of things that maybe people can purchase or get themselves into. But for the purpose of what we're talking about today, where you're creating a vault that is for the education of your young living members, that's not something that you want to have just floating out there in the open, right? Because nobody from the internet, just somebody somewhere is going to be like, I don't want to join your young living team because you have a vault that has stuff in it, right? They're going to come and they're going to join because they joined your team because you had a conversation with them, right? And so the same thing applies here. They're going to get access to that thing after they've either had a conversation with you or they've joined someone that's on your team. So the way that they would be able to get access to those resources is, well, there's actually several. And we go over all of those in detail. So you can make the choice that you want at getoil.com/membertraining. One of the easier ways to do this is to set up a landing page, but if you have concerns about who ultimately accesses the information, then of course you can apply that vault to contacts, either in bulk or one at a time from your member area. Like verified, these are people from your VO, they get access, that kind of thing. All right. Dee says, I customize my colors, but the color of the quoted text is purple. Is there a way to change that in blog posts and other communications? Greg, when you do a, um, when you do like a custom settings for your fonts, but then you maybe create a page or a blog post and you add colors or settings on that page, would that override the site settings?
It should, uh, if not, and you know, maybe, you know, block quotes, maybe there's something going on with that. If that doesn't work for you, certainly reach out to us. Uh, maybe there's some little setting on our end where block quotes are being, you know, they're overriding your setting instead of the other way around. It should basically be whatever you put in the editor. Um, you know, you highlight the text and change the colors. It should apply, but if not, let us know.
Awesome. All right. Just confirming, can we set up that same education young living vault that you showed as in a bundle? I'm just popping in now. Um, so yeah, you can set up a young living education vault like we showed. It's, um, so could you, if I'm understanding your question right, and I don't have your name, so I'm sorry. Um, if you wanted to take your young living education vault that you created, the class, the pages and everything, and you wanted to create a resource sharing bundle to give to your team so they can use what you made? The answer to that question is yes. I'm not sure that that's the question that you're asking though. So feel free to come back and, and clarify. All right. Nikki, question about my site you reviewed was thinking a webinar at the top would be a good idea. Webinar teaches over all the things that speak to my bad signal. So, um, yeah. If you want that to be sort of a lead magnet, you could definitely test that out. Webinars can actually work really fine at the, the top of a page, so long as what the webinar is offering is very clearly communicating to the person that you're talking to, what they want to know and what they care about, right? So, um, so yeah, you could do that. So, you know, free webinar, you know, in 20 minutes, I'll show you how to X, Y, Z. To the right people, that's the right thing. They'll sign up for it. You could totally do that. All right. Can you add different fonts that are not offered on Get Oil Link, but are offered on Canva?
Yes, absolutely. There is a custom font page. I'll put that here in the chat, also in the help center. That kind of gives you the overview of the process as well as a walkthrough. This is on the premium plan and then we have the basic, we have an add-on to the basic plan, um, if you want to have that feature added. There's like, think with that, you know, with premium or higher or that basic with the add-on, there are, I think, the 1,000 Google fonts that come with it. If that's not available there, uh, typically you do have to go find the font for purchase somewhere. They're often for sale. Just search for the font name and you'll probably find someplace that's selling it. And then you take that font file and then follow the steps, um, in that help article about the custom fonts. If you have any questions, certainly reach out. Um, most people can get, you know, most of the way done with that. And we can, you know, we're certainly able to help out if you get stuck, um, with that font installation. But yeah, you can basically put any font that's available up for sale, um, on your website.
Excellent. Speaking of us being able to help, uh, Jana says, um, that she's with another provider and has a web address with them that she's trying to get moved over to Get Oil Link. And maybe there's some issues on the other provider's side or something like that. Um, we can help you set your domain up with us, no matter where you got it from. There may be, if it's, uh, still being managed by someone else, there, there may be some, you know, some things that need to be considered or worked out. So just send us an email. It sounds like you have been working with our team. So maybe just check back with us so that we can make sure that everything is in order, the way that it needs to be, so that that can be set up for you.
Yeah. One thought, I was looking for your email. I couldn't find anything under your name. So maybe, uh, maybe it's under a different name or there's a spelling issue or something, but, but I don't know exactly what's going on offhand. It might be a case with this specific party provider that you're talking about, that they don't actually allow connecting it while it's still registered with them. So you might actually have to transfer ownership to another provider to make that happen. If everything you've been doing so far isn't working, um, that's possibly an option. So, um, but yeah, we can help out on, on support.
Excellent. Oh, so Carrie, you were talking about connecting the vaults together. So there's some info in one of the accounts, that connects, uh, some different info in the other one. Um, okay. So what, what you're asking then? Cause I think you're, you were showing up as, unless this is, I, I don't know. I'm not sure if this is you or someone else. So forgive me. So if you have a vault that, um, that talks about something that's in another vault in your member area, you absolutely can link to that, right? And if they have access, if they have permission or they've paid for what's in the other vault, then they will be able to successfully connect to that next thing. So let's just say, for instance, you have a course that you're selling, uh, you're using a vault to sell your course. And, uh, and then you have sort of a bonus course in another vault that like is sort of an upsell from this one. You can make a link to that inside of that vault and it'll point them to the other one. Now, if they have not paid for that upsell, then they're not going to get access until they pay. If they have, then it'll take them straight over to the information that they wanted to have. But you were pointing to the resource sharing feature. If you actually go to resource sharing down the left-hand column on your Good Oil Link site. This is where you can take a custom page, a vault, an online class, a saved reply campaign, you name it. And you can create a bundle of things, uh, from your Get Oil Link account. And then share that bundle link with another person with a Get Oil Link account, i.e. someone in your downline. and then share that bundle link with another person with a good oiling account, i.e. someone in your downline perhaps. And you can then get that thing, they can have those things installed in their account. So if you have a, if you have an account with one of our content providers, for instance, they create inside of their own good oiling account, a campaign. And, and then, of course, you get that bundle code, you click it, you now have that campaign. That's what that means. All right, sidebar question, is there a Canadian compliant info in the grow workspace sways? There are Canadian compliance specific that I'm aware of as far as how many and which ones. That's definitely going to be a question to take to grow workspace. But I know that they are continuously expanding their markets and their languages. But I can't speak to how many and which ones. Okay, how do I make that same young living product education vault? Well, if you're working with me directly and, and that's, you know, that's kind of something that I'm doing with clients one on one, that that is what we use as a standard format. But basically, the gist is if you want to create something like it, is you follow what is in the, the get oiling.com forward slash member training, follow our suggestions there, use your preferred content partner resources and then plug those in in the way that you see best. You see that fits best in terms of organization of topics and things like that that you would want to cover for your members. But again, really, the idea here is to plan first, what do I want it to do? And then what am I going to use? Then you just organize what you're going to use in order, right? So you may want to have a certain set of videos happen first, and then there are some sways in a different section, and then there's recipes in a different section. You do you the way you want to do, but just highly recommend that the stuff that you use to fill it is stuff that's already made, that's already out there. Because you don't have to have your personal signature on young living product education, right? We're talking about educating people on young living product. If there are people who are good at it, they're out there doing it right now, let them do it for you so that you could go out and keep talking to people and introduce them to young living, right? Because that's really your job. Your job is not to put your flourish on, you know, young living product education. Your job is to expose the world to what is here on offer for them, right? All right, not vaults, just single people accounts, records, Carrie, I'm not really sure what you're asking. Okay, resource sharing is amazing. I can share a 30 day campaign with one of my new leaders through resource sharing instead of copying and pasting. Yes, 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 you got it. Awesome. I love it when it clicks. All right, Gail says, once you've purchased a sway, are you saying I can resell this info? No, 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 no. Depending on who you get this from, they have their own rules as to what they allow. You're not going to, what I'm talking about making here today and the examples that I showed with the sway files, that's not for sale. That is a resource to educate your members. When you purchase content from our content providers, that content is intended to educate your members, right? I'm simply talking about organizing it in such a way that people are able to access it without you having to go and manually find the right thing every time, right? So check with your content providers, please don't sell their content unless you have bought license to do so. All right, if you want to learn how to work with me, you can, do we have a short link for that? Just shoot us an email, support at good oiling.com. And we can work out a call. All right, Vesta asks vault privacy. I just removed my husband's test account from a vault, but he can still get in all of them. Is there a training about vaults? Can't write, yes, this is get oiling.com forward slash member training. If you don't want someone in a vault anymore, you want to make sure you have all of their potential contact files. Because, you know, people sign up with multiple email addresses. And then you're going to go and perform that action of removing from a vault. Again, this is adding or removing from vaults. This is all covered in good oiling.com forward slash member training. You can learn how to do all of that there and reference that at any point in time.
Yeah, one, one quick follow up on that too. Sometimes this can happen, I mean, since it sounds like it's your husband, there is some possibility that he might be logged in like as your account. That's really the only reason that somebody should be able to see. I mean, other than I guess what Ashley mentioned, like if, you know, there's some other email address or whatever. But if he's logged in as the, you know, account administrator, whatever, your main login for good oiling, then by default, you see all the vaults. So that might be what's going on. If that isn't the case, you know, if he'd willing to share us the, or share with us the login information for his specific member area account, we would love to be able to log in as him and see what's going on. So, you know, you could share that with us through support and we can diagnose from there if that actually is the issue.
Yeah, often when, when I've experienced that, it's been because I am actually still logged in as the administrator. And when you do, in fact, log yourself out and you, and you log in as someone else, you can see that the access is different. Suzanne, why do you have a headache? We've got, you've got, you've got a planner, remember, we've got a planner. And then you've got a course that you can hit pause on and rewind. It shows you how to do all of the stuff. I'm excited for you guys. This is, it is a big undertaking, making a member area vault that educates your people is a big undertaking. But you know what, like what, what do you spend the majority of your time on, the bigger your team grows? You're educating your members, right? What's the most profitable activity you can engage in? Like what are, what are the top five most profitable activities you can engage in to grow your young living business? Educating your members is not in that top five, right? So it's worth it for you to figure it out and to get it done and to just commit to making it better and better over time, accepting that nothing is perfect when you first do it. But, but commit to getting the work done that then gives you your time back. Because if you're spending most of your time doing something that's not in the top five of the most profitable business building activities for, for building young living, then you're not growing, right? So if you can get yourself out of spending your time on the non-profitable activities, imagine how quickly you'll grow, right? And the best thing about having a resource like this built is that your team can use it too. So now we're talking about duplicating and empowering your people to duplicate without having to get gunked up in the stuff that takes up the time that's not profitable, right? All right, seems overwhelming right now, but I'm just going to start working on it and get going. Finished product will be amazing, baby steps. That is the right mindset. That is it, one step at a time, one step at a time. All right, we love you guys and thank you for being here. Get oiling.com forward slash website review. You can sign up for a website review for me on one of these. And, you know, and we can actually look over your website together, just like we did today. Gail, you did have one question here and I want to answer this for you before we go. She says, don't want to belabor this point, but I just need clarification. If you're charging members to enter the vault, you're not, don't, if this is member education, you're not charging anyone for this. So what you're doing here and what I'm suggesting is that you take the sways that you have purchased, assuming that you've purchased sways, you purchase those sways to educate your members. Instead of just doing that one off, one sway at a time, when it seems to pertain to the person who's interested right now, what I'm saying that you do is you just plug this into a vault. No, you don't mean people pay for it. You can have people pay for vaults. That is totally a thing you can do, but for member education, the cost of entry is becoming your young living member or a member of your young living downline period, right? So that's it. So they're not paying for anything in addition. They're simply going to open up an online class in the free member area that you're providing for your people as a support tool and an education tool for your downline. So, so that's it. So yeah, you, they're, they're not paying, you have paid for it. So let's just say if you're, you know, girl workspace does sways, I'm not sure if anybody else does sways. So you have a girl workspace account, you have paid for that bundle, you have that sway. You may now use that sway, you have their permission to use that sway to educate your members. That is a free thing for your members to interact with. I did include in, and this is what I do for the vaults that I build like this for, for our clients, you know, specific language in there that says this vault utilizes sway files from grow workspace to help educate you. Please don't use these for anything other than your own education. If you want to get your own, here's my link to grow workspace, right? Because that's the right thing to do with that. Okay, I hope that that helps. Gail, let me know. Does that make sense? Just send me a quick little, little yes, because I do want to make sure that that is really understood here. Okay, perfect. Okay, great. You guys are awesome for sticking around and committing to grow your business and are really excited to see you guys next week and review some more websites.
Thanks everybody.
Bye.